...basis and in a variety of roles. As a council, make us honest stewards and may our work tonight be blessed with insight, understanding, and wisdom. Help us to represent all members of our community and to conduct ourselves in a spirit of cooperation while we deliberate matters that will impact our city today and in the future. Amen.
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 So it's good to see all of you. Welcome to tonight's meeting. It is November 6, 2018, 5:30 PM. So I call the meeting to order. And our first item up is open forum. And we do have someone that has signed up to speak to us, Jason Monday. If you would like to come up, please. The open forum is the public's opportunity to address council on any matter related to the city that is not on the agenda. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, city council generally cannot discuss, consider, or take action on matters not listed on the agenda. Your comments are limited to three minutes. Welcome, Mr. Monday.
Welcome. I'm Jason Monday on Monday Sign Service here in Nacogdoches. I've been in business here 17 years. We are currently the gatekeeper to the overhead street banners. There's other sign companies that's eligible to do those things, but we, well, I came in to let y'all know that we're no longer gonna support those. It's a dangerous act and the amount of work that goes into those things for the amount of return, of course, for us, it's always been a donation to different organizations to do because we just, we don't even cover labor doing them. But when those things give up, a little history about them, I think they've been up about 15 years. Aaron Colehavy, who is now city manager of Huntsville, him and he was city manager back then, and Larissa Philpott had come together and they needed a way to let people know what was going on throughout town. They came over this thing because other municipalities were still using these things. And we got together and met and talked about it, told them I'd basically donate most of the structure in the time and install, just a little install fee. I think it was about $1,400. It was really inexpensive back then. I went down to H&amp;H and got the pipe and built the cables and put them across. And we put our first banner. We kinda engineered it to another banner that went in another town. And I fixed it to where you could drag them across and try to do them without very much headway. Well, when we did those things, they were, people weren't on smartphones. They were on Nokia bricks. The flip phones had just come out really good and yet nobody was really texting on them yet. Well, as time goes on, there's more and more events happening. There's more and more people fighting to get on them. The North Street one's always busy. To set up, to work on that thing, I'll give you a little headway. We have to put our service truck in on the college side facing north, rotate our boom all the way around to untie the banner that's there, or to install a new one. We hang it and we put a rope on it, and then we undo the bucket truck and we tie the rope to the pole so it's unattended, the rope is, while we're moving the truck. And we have to go down the street through North Street traffic, turn around and come back and face south on the Raising Cane side. We try to keep tearing up the yard and the grass. One tire rides on the curb, which is dangerous. That means my truck is right on the street and the other side's on the sidewalk. Any farther over, it'll sink into Never Never Land and we've made ruts and we had to fix it. And we fixed that several times because there was just no other option to do it. As I go across the street, you have to play Frogger to go all the way back across with that rope. And North Street, especially when the college is in, is not a very good place to be. When you get to the middle, to the center turn lane, it hangs up. And as it did happen to me last week, I've been sending my guys, and I hadn't done it in about five years because I'm the owner and I, I miss that sort of stuff anymore. I don't have to. But I send them and they come in and complain every time, oh, somebody's gonna get hurt. So I had to do it and the guys were out, and so here I go. I go do it to take care of the J.C.'s and other people that's on it right now. I get in the middle, the banner hangs up. There was a lady turning and going south to turn into Chili's. She was on her phone. She never seen me. And I jumped in between the southbound traffic in the north, in the center lane and had to get skinny to let her by. And a truck going on the south side was F-250 Ford with his mirrors out this far and I had to bend over to miss him. And I was hit by a car 10 years ago and my arm about severed off and my teeth knocked out and my eye sockets broke and arteries cut. And it took me years to get over it, 60 miles an hour. So I already know what it feels like. I am going to pass on the overhead street banner. And like I said, it went up and it was a great idea when it went in. We didn't have any other options. The LED message boards, which everybody opposes, wasn't out good yet. And this was our, really basically, our only communication to let people know what was happening. We, at the time, they started getting real progressive down here, closing off this downtown square like they should, having events and this, that, and the other. And it was a great thing for that. Regardless if it's a music festival or whatever, it's always been good. But nobody pays attention to them anymore. Nobody reads them. They're always the wrong color. You can't see through them very good. It's kind of a sad, mean thing. We've been charging $280 to do them. Takes me about five hours to do one. By the time you load it, get it ready, talk to the customer, then they, and then I stored it for a year because they forgot they left it there and along with the other things. So it's, it's a big deal. And our company, we have went too far with it, I think, and we've carried it on too long. And here at the end, we've got a few more left to do. And I've just about decided not to do them because after I got hit, almost got hit, and I'm a, I've got people that count on me. And I, my other guys, if something happened to one of them, I wouldn't be able to live with myself. I called the city manager and I asked about what it would take, the city planner about, because it came out up through the city planner's office. So I went back to that entity to see about, let's not do them anymore and let's not lease them. They said, I need to come here and talk to y'all. I've talked to every other sign company in Lufkin, here in town, and anybody with a bucket truck, and nobody wants it because I was gonna pass it off. I can't get anybody to take it over. And we're just, it's just not a safe thing anymore. And it was different. And I called C.D. though, when we changed it last time, and he, his exact words, we're busy, but I'm gonna send SFA up there. And they did. And they came up there and helped us and we got it across. I just don't think that we need to do it anymore unless we block the streets off. And that's a big obligation for his guys to do, to block off North Street, you know, to put that thing across. And it's the only safe option, even at 3:00 in the morning.
Well, thank you, Mr. Monday, for coming and talking to us.
Okay.
Appreciate it very much.
Let y'all know what's happening.
Thank you. Goodness. We will move on to items, agenda item number three, items to be removed from the consent agenda. If council wants to pull something, please let us know. And if not, chair would entertain a motion for approval.
Motion approved.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. No discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Our regular agenda, first item is a public hearing, amending chapter 118 zoning. Good evening, Mr. Manti.
Good evening, mayor and council. The item before us tonight is proposing to amend chapter 118.430 of the city's code of ordinances. Under the direction of the city manager, staff is in the process of reviewing our current city ordinances to see how best, to review them to see if they meet current development standards and try to see how best we can update them to meet current needs within the city. Most of the time, we say ordinances are not written in stone, and so there's the need to always update them to meet current needs. So tonight, the proposal is to update section 118.430, which is a commercial district landscaping ordinance. And city, the planning department has identified two major changes to this ordinance. Can I please have that? Oh, it's got, okay, great, great. So the major changes that we plan on doing is to, our current ordinance allows for commercial landscaping in only two zoning ordinances, which is the B1 and the B2. I believe in that, that looks more like restricting landscaping to only two zoning districts within the city. The new proposal or the update would require commercial landscaping for every commercial development within the city. And so any developments in B1, B2, B3, B4, industrial or heavy industrial would require commercial landscaping. And then the second major change that we did was requiring parking landscaping for parking spaces that are 120 and over. The current landscaping ordinance require parking spaces, parking landscaping for parking lots which have 200 spaces or over. So any development that has less than 200 parking spaces would not require commercial landscaping. Looking at the city of Nacogdoches with population over 30,000, we don't usually have a lot of developments that require 200 parking spaces or more. So basically, we would end up not enforcing this parking landscaping. Staff did reduce it to 120, which is more of going a little bit over half of what the current ordinance requires. And this is open to the city council to decide if we want to go lower than this or go above this. But staff has proposed 120 parking spaces to trigger landscaping. Justification for this update, staff believes it would help to ensure uniformity in development. Current landscaping ordinance require only B1 and B2 to trigger commercial landscaping, but allowing for all the commercial development would ensure that there's landscaping in every other commercial development. And secondly, we believe that a city like Nacogdoches, like I said earlier, does not really have much of major development like that will trigger 200 parking spaces. And so reduction to 120, we believe, would be, would be an effort to require parking landscaping within certain developments in the city. And then we believe it also enhance developments in the city and promotes the quality growth within the city limits. So major changes, reduction in the parking landscaping requirements, and then requiring landscaping for every commercial development in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment or speak to this issue? Okay, hearing none. Council, any questions or comments for Mr. Manti?
Has there, where did the number 120 come from? Is that something based on other municipalities our size or?
Well, I, it is something internal. The current ordinance requires 200 parking spaces to trigger. And I believe staff at that time had a reason for it. And so what, what I looked at was to look at medium-scale development, which will probably have between 70 to 130 or 150. So that is where I tried to strike in the middle to make it 120, looking at development in the, within the city limits.
In your opinion, would it be considered onerous to lower that number significantly more, maybe to 60 or 70 spaces?
Great. And coming up with this, it's always good to look at what we currently have and to build upon it in the future. I, I have not just been informed, but I've looked at documents to show that adopting this commercial landscaping was not an easy task. It actually went through some few hurdles. And so I believe staff at that point chose 200 for a reason. And so I just didn't want, I just didn't think slicing it to that minimum was, yeah, that's why I chose 120. But I would want to stay for a fact that if city council thinks we should reduce it to as, any number that they feel is good for the city considering current developments, I will be, I will be all for it.
Yeah. Well, my thought is that as the garden capital of Texas, that the, the more we can encourage landscaping with almost any size, commercial development, I would be in favor of it personally.
And I'll be willing to bring it back again if there's the need for a reduction in that.
Okay.
Zones B1 through B5 or however many it is, there's a requirement for us if you, you know, erect a building there. It has to have so many parking spots. Is that a requirement?
So currently, so currently, if, to do commercial landscaping, to do landscaping, your property has to be in the B1 or B2. So if you, if you want to build a, a commercial building in the industrial zone, the ordinance allows you to build without any landscaping. So this update is requiring landscaping for every commercial development, regardless of the zoning.
Right. So why are we, have the 120 there? If all of the zones require landscaping?
Also, this, this 120 would apply to all the zones as well? It will apply to everywhere there's landscaping and not?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. But there's gonna be different sized parking lots in different zones. Or maybe, maybe it depends on the size of the building, right?
Depends on the size of the developments, yeah.
I have a few questions. I called you this afternoon and I asked you how many parking spaces were at the new furniture store, I believe it's called Ashley Furniture. Were you able to find that number?
Yes, I looked on the site plan and I counted 91.
Okay, so that would not, that whole supply would not have to have any trees at all?
Yes, please, yeah.
And can, any idea, I mean, I'm, does Lowe's have 120?
Lowe's will probably be around similar figure, probably 100 or just a few lots over, I believe, yeah.
So this ordinance applies to large, big box retails, like if Home Depot wanted to come in or Target?
Sure.
But the vast majority, 95% of the projects, wouldn't require any trees in the parking lot?
I, I agree.
So if, could you go back one slide to the image that you showed us? So that parking lot, if I'm just looking at that, that's approximately, I mean, assuming that those are about 10 spaces per bay there, that's about 120 spaces?
Sure.
Okay, so if that was 119 spaces, then that would just be a sea of parking. There wouldn't be any requirements for parking at all?
Great, yeah.
For trees in the parking?
Exactly, which the current ordinance allows, yeah.
Okay. And also, there's, when I'm looking at the ordinance, it's not really setting any type of requirements of where the trees get planted. Like, it doesn't say you can have 10 spaces, then you have to have a tree. You can put all your trees behind the building.
That, that is true.
Okay, so, in fact, we're not even requiring people to put trees in the parking lot. We're just requiring them to put trees if they have 120 spaces.
Great, great, yeah. The ordinance is not specifying that if you have 20 spaces, put one tree here, put this. It just gives you delivery to plant trees in, within a certain percentage of that 120, yeah.
And there's no requirements to do any type of irrigation or guarantee that the trees survive?
The ordinance does not, has any specific standards on that as well, so.
So they could plant trees, they could die, and they met the code?
Well, we, we would expect them to maintain their trees on site.
Well, like, if you look at that donut shop on South Street, you know, they, they stuck a couple little trees in there and then they died, but they met the requirements of the ordinance.
The ordinance, yeah.
You know, I mean, that happens all over the place because people don't really want to worry about the trees, so, anyway.
I would be inclined to certainly include some language requiring maintenance of the trees and, and look at a significantly lower number.
And that, and that is something that I will be glad, gladly look at and bring back if you give me the chance to.
And we could, could we pass this, just adding the commercial landscaping to the B3 zone and then have you look at the ordinance more carefully, reach out to the community? You're getting ready to have a meeting Thursday, and you can see what kind of pushback there is from, you know, people that, you know, I mean, basically, the bottom line is, we don't want to plant trees because it costs money.
Sure.
That's the bottom line. It's like, we prefer making more money than having a beautiful city. That's, you know, when you boil the argument down, that's where you get to. And so why don't you, I would like us to just go ahead and, I mean, we've already, there's several projects, the, the storage unit on, on University Drive, there's two projects being built out on the universe, on Stollings Drive now. None of those were required. They may actually, I mentioned that to Jim, they may actually plant some trees just because they want to, but they aren't required to do that. So those are three projects I can think of off the top of my head and which were not required to do any landscaping that we just missed.
Sure.
I, I would be more inclined to support an ordinance that passed the, you know, reaching out to catch the industrial zoning and then come back and look at this and, you know, actually have a tree ordinance that, you know, does some good.
And councilor Moore, when I talk about commercial development, that means that if you put a commercial building, like a storage facility, in an industrial zone, it will still trigger landscaping.
That's along the street, right?
Whether along the street or in the other zone. So far as the building is not for residence, then it triggers. So if you, if you put in an industrial warehouse, that would also require landscaping, even if it's in an industrial zone. So using the word "commercial" would mean any development that is not residence, regardless of the zone.
Right. And that landscape ordinance only addresses, for lack of a better term, street trees. So every so many feet, you have to draw, you don't have to do any trees in the parking lot. You just have to plant a tree, like they did at the water park. You know, they had to plant a few trees along there because I guess that zoning required them to plant some trees there. And I don't, I haven't looked at them lately to see if they're alive, but, you know, that's what happened. I mean, none of this stuff would actually get done if, unless you had 120 spaces.
Yeah, if you have 120 spaces, yeah, I agree on that. So that is why I mentioned earlier, that is, the 120 spaces, is this something that you want me to go back and look at, to reduce? Because I, as a city planner, I'm, I'm just not interested in the parking lot, but how the parking lot relates to the environment in that way. So is this something that you think?
It's, the purpose is to break up a sea of asphalt, to provide aesthetic quality and to minimize the heat island effect. Those are the, the benefits of planting trees in a parking lot. And the trees should be shade trees. They shouldn't be, you know, some tree that doesn't provide any shade. I mean, you know, we would need to list, you know, species that actually provide shade rather than, you know, crepe myrtle. Crepe myrtle is not gonna really provide shade like a oak tree would, just to, off the top of my head, come up with a couple, so. I, I'd rather see us begin to move forward to an ordinance that made Nacogdoches more beautiful, and I don't think this ordinance meets that criteria. Because 119, then there'd be no trees there at all. You showed 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 islands with trees on it. If there was 119 spaces, there would be a sea of parking in that particular image that you had there.
Great. And like I said earlier, the current ordinance required 200. And I, I believe that ordinances were, are written to address current situations and future projections. So maybe there was a rationale for choosing 200 at that point in time, so.
I think it's just pulled out of the air.
Great. So, so moving forward, I, I think councilman Anderson has stated that we should look at reducing it. I just want to confirm if you're also on the same line of reducing the 120 to, and as I am.
And more detail about, you have to have a, a tree every 10 spaces and you have to have irrigation so that, you know, you actually achieve what you're trying to get done here, not just an ordinance. Because, I mean, now somebody could go plant the trees out behind the building and meet the criteria.
Well, I agree at, at looking at a reduction of the 120. I think for most development in a city of our size, I think that's fine to look at that. I don't think we ought to make it so restrictive that it, you know, I'm concerned about requiring irrigation and, and all of that sort of thing. We can't make it so restrictive that it limits development. And then, what was the other, oh, tree every so many spaces. Now, that particular graphic, I blew up and there are 20 spaces in each of those little sections, so that's a lot of parking. And I don't think that's bad, but I, I don't like the fact that they can just plant them on the perimeter. You know, it would be nice to say, we need them in the parking lot, but they could have two islands, you know, instead of.
Sure.
I just hate to be too restrictive with possible future development. So I don't know what that does. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Bolden? I don't know what that does to have you bring something back to us, and it may look like here are two or three options that we can have input on and we can decide on one.
I, I think I can. Well, I, I have no issues going back to relook at this. As a city planner, there's nothing that would make me more happy than to be able to do some elements of design and planning. And so, and it looks like that is what so far has been spoken about tonight. And so I'll be willing to go back and reduce this number if that is what we look at. And I think moving forward, there's a meeting on Thursday, it is something that we can discuss. And so, like I said in, in my beginning, ordinances are not written in stone, and so they're always good to review them and update as, in a concert sorts of way. So, yeah, I'll be willing to go back to look at it again.
But the tree planting is directly related to the parking lot, right? Not the back of the building, on the side of the building? It's directly related to the parking lot?
Yes, that is, if they have 120 parking, yeah, yeah. I, I did discuss that with city manager and we felt that 200 spaces was just too much. So that's why we reduced it to 120. But if we have to go further to reduce it, then that is something that we can look at, so, no problem with that.
You know, as you were talking about the, you know, possible burden of doing things like irrigation, maybe we could just put language in there to require maintenance of those trees, a more general one. And if they choose to make a larger island that has enough water absorption area or use an irrigation system, as long as there's a requirement for, for maintenance one way or the other, and I think in most cases, it will probably end up being irrigation, but.
Okay. All right.
Right. And so, well, what would be the, the repercussions from letting the tree die? I mean, if we, if we didn't require irrigation, mayor?
Do we do anything now?
I don't think we do anything now.
Okay.
Yeah, we need some sort of penalty written in there, I think.
No, actually, we do require a replacement. We may miss some, but I know that Splash Kingdom has had to replant more than one tree. And there's been a couple of other developments which were told to go and replant some more trees. We need to go look at the donut shop on South Street. And if their trees are dead, then they will be told to replant.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. We had a consensus. He's gonna go back. Do we need to do anything else?
Okay. Very briefly, I did hear the comment from the peanut gallery, oh no, as I stood up. But we do have this separated as a public hearing and as, as a possible approval to, to an A and a B on this agenda item, mayor. So we could certainly finish out with a public hearing to see if there's any comment for or against it, and then move to B. And then if it was so moved, it could be tabled to be brought back at a future date with, with some of these matters to be addressed.
Okay.
We can certainly do it at that time. There, and with some instruction, I, I would point out that on into the ordinance, I know we're focused right now on the 200 versus 120 and the, the overall commercial versus B1, B2, but there are some requirements in that ordinance that talk about spacing of trees, a distance of trees from a center point, that trees, at least one shall be planted for each 150 square feet. And there, there are some mechanisms in there, but those could certainly be looked at more closely.
Okay.
So with that, I will, I will take my seat.
Okay. Okay, so is there anyone that would like to speak for this? Yes, Mr. Monday?
Hey, I'm Jason Monday. I just did a development in another municipality and I noticed that y'all were talking about the, the space requirements. They, one thing that they did require in another municipality that, they, the green zone was a big issue with them as far as having a new, a new, they had a furniture store that went in this other municipality, and they did it on percentages of the building size. If you had so much size of a building, they required 15% green zone in front of the building. They required 20%. And it did have in their ordinance, they had to keep timed irrigation. It was in their ordinance. It, it's just an easy line item to add right now, up to $5,000 is what it was 10 years ago of timed irrigation. It was in the city ordinance and at, at development stage. So whatever percentage of ever the building is on the size of the property, if it was so many thousand square feet, then the next, it went to 18%, then it went to 25%, and then something like a, a school building would have almost 30%. like a school building would have almost 30% required of green zone area compared to the, as the building got smaller, of course, it was less. But no matter what they did, they required in the ordinance that it had timed irrigation, regardless if it was a four-by-four flower bed or whatever, it was mandatory that they had it. So I've seen it in others, and I know it can be rolled into this one. And regardless if it's front door flower beds or not, they've doing it everywhere else but here. And at a percentage of the size of the building as per size of the property in general. So I know I just had to pay for it, so I know exactly what it was.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. Anyone else want to speak for this? Yes, Ms. Cartwright?
Hi, I'm Brandy Cartwright, and I just want to say how excited I am about having more green space in our city. Because, man, those shade trees, they are, I look for them, I will park really far away to get a shade tree in Texas. So it'll be awesome to have that in our city and know that we're going to have a greener space.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone want to speak against this? No? Okay, public hearing is closed. So now, do we need a motion for tabling?
Yes, maybe you can certainly do that, or construction.
Okay. So I make a motion that we table this, do we table a public hearing or just amending the chapter? Okay. We're going to table this agenda item, and you are going to take into account some of the comments that we made, and other things that you might even want to have thought of or seen to add to it and come back to us?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
That'll work.
Okay. And that is for B, 5B, approval of the ordinance.
All right.
Need a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I do.
Yes?
So what happens if between, I mean, I guess you can come back soon, and we could do that. But right now, we're leaving open the possibility that somebody will file a site plan for a B3 and won't have to do any ordinance. I mean, could we just pass the part that includes the B3 zoning in there so that that will be covered in case somebody files a site plan between now and when we, you know, and we should look at this in more detail. This is a big, important issue. You know, how we set up our landscape ordinance, you know, dictates what the community is going to be like over a long period of time. And, you know, we've missed the opportunity on several projects, you know, because we exclude it, industrial zoning. So is there a way, could we just approve that part and then, you know, look in more detail at a comprehensive landscape response?
Good. If I'm given the option, I would, I would advise you approve the landscaping ordinance for every commercial development. And then I'll come back later to talk about the specifics of the parking landscaping.
Further amending.
How to space, probably require islands for every 20 parking spaces and all of those stuff. So today, we can, I would advise that we approve landscaping for every other commercial development, and then I can bring the rest later on to, to go further into that. Because that would be more of zooming into the ordinance. But if we approve it today, then we are going to require landscaping for every commercial development, because we never know what might come in tomorrow. So.
We have a motion in a second.
But it would be what you're saying, but it would be what you proposed.
So it's going to be-
Be 120.
As proposed as a start, and then further amended.
Yeah. So I will come back with more design analysis or a design concept on how to do landscaping on the parking lots and all of those stuff with irrigation and maintenance of trees as well.
That's a good idea. So, but we have a motion and a second on the table right now to table it. So if we're going to approve, so we need to vote that down.
You can lose.
And then-
And then move to approve.
I can amend the motion of the tabling?
You could. You could withdraw your motion, or you could vote it. If it's voted down, then that won't go forward. If, then if somebody is so inclined to pass this ordinance, make a motion to pass it in its present form that would cover all commercial zones and reduce the spacing, you could do that with the thought of coming back later with these amendments, or to not pass it at all, or whatever one feels meant to do.
How often do we actually, I mean, if we pass the ordinance, it becomes in effect, how often do we actually update the code? I mean, is that done annually, or, you know?
There's constant amendments throughout, throughout our ordinance.
I mean, do we have to pay to actually update that and print it and?
We do use MuniCode and this-
We only update once every six months.
So every six months. So if we got this done, when is it get updated again in the MuniCode?
They just did it.
Okay, so it'd be approximately another six months before it would go through that process. And so if we pass it now, it would just be an ordinance that was, you know, in effect on your desk. And if we came back and redid it again, we would change it, and then it would be incorporated into six months when we update with the online version. Okay.
Any other discussion? So if I want, so I'm going to amend my motion.
Well, you-
You want to vote it down?
You can withdraw it.
Withdraw it, okay.
Probably the simplest thing, if you wish to do so, is to withdraw it.
Okay.
You could take a vote on it, and if it's voted down, then go the other direction. But to withdraw it would probably be the simplest.
Most expedient. Okay.
Yes.
Then I will withdraw my motion. And would someone else like to make a motion, or I can?
I move that we approve the amendment of ordinance, of the landscape ordinance as proposed, with the condition that we look at further restrictions, significant restrictions moving forward.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
And with that said, now that we have it before we vote, I think, you know, what would be useful if we, you know, engaged the community in a discussion of this, rather than you come, show us an ordinance, we pass it. You know, reach out to people and, you know, because a lot of people I know are interested in seeing, you know, Nacogdoches become more beautiful. And it's not going to happen unless it's required by the code. We've seen that. You know, we have data that shows that it ain't going to happen. And so I have a request, since we've, in effect, have six months to do it, at least, you know, that we reach out and try to look at some innovative ideas, like, there's lots of things you can do. We could talk about that in another time.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Man.
All right, thank you.
Item number six, consider ordinance, amending ordinance number 1748-9-17. Ms. Kerbo, good evening.
Mayor, Council. Before you tonight is our annual cleanup of the, this prior fiscal year, 2017, 2018 budget. There are quite a few items on here that, for one reason or the other, were over budget for the year. I will go through a couple of the larger ones, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. You'll notice that Fire Department had a significant amount of overtime and retirement expenditures. Those were due to the deployments that they were on this past year with wildfires and floods and everything that happened this past year. Those reimbursements will not be received until this current fiscal year. And so those budget items had to be amended because, of course, we didn't budget and prepare for an additional $175,000 worth of expenditures. Let's see. The other large item is $699,000, which is a transfer from Economic Development Fund to the New Capital Project Fund. If you'll recall, this past year, we received approval from the state to close out the revolving loan fund by spending those funds ourselves on a couple of projects here in town. And so at the time, all that money was sitting in the Economic Development Fund. We created the Capital Projects Fund on the books, but we didn't make the budget amendment until this point. So that is just transferring that money in so that we can begin spending those on those RLF projects in the current fiscal year. We also had some money that was in the Special Grant Fund that had been raised by donations in prior years for Design Hill Project. And now that we are moving forward with that, we have transferred those into the Hotel Motel Fund, where the other donations that came in this past year are, so that we had them all in one succinct fund. And so those, that $53,000 has been raised over, I want to say, the last five to seven years. So that's numerous small, small donations. So that adds to the amount available to fund a Design Hill Project. In the Special Grant Fund, we also had $150,000 for a development incentive. If you recall, we had a couple of entities that donated funds for the expansion in remodeling of the Convention Center at Fredonia. And this is, we were simply a pass-through. That's not something that we had budgeted during the normal budget process, so we had to add that in during this year-end cleanup as well. Those are the significant items. Well, bad debt write-offs, those are always an annual expense. We try to get as close as we can on those. We just, you just really never know who, how many you're going to have water bills that we end up having to turn over for collections. Now, these are written off, but they are turned over for collections, and so they are still being worked. It looks like a significant amount. I think there was $31,000 in utility fund, $57,000 in sanitation, and $3,300 in airport. But those actually are in line with what we normally see. It's about 1% of annual sales, so it's really not a significant amount when you consider it's based on about $20 million worth of sales. It's not as significant as it has been in the past. It's running pretty good for the last couple of years. If you have any other questions on any other line items, I'd be happy to answer anything that you might have.
Is there anyone here that would like to say anything about this? Okay, hearing none, Council. Any questions or comments for Ms. Kerbo?
I have a question, just in general, just to Mr. Jeffers. If we have a general question about the budget that we passed back in September, how would we ask that? I mean, other than coming to your office and asking it if we wanted, you know, to ask it, you know, where it would be on the record in public? Is this a time, or how would we go about doing that?
I would put an item on the agenda, and if the Council wants, have a quarterly report. You know, typically, we provide those, you get a statement monthly about expenditures. But if you want that report to actually be oral, where there can be discussion about the budget, and all we have to do is change that format, whether it's monthly, quarterly, Council's pleasure.
And if we did that quarterly, would the discussion be available to all things budget, or would it be simply on that quarterly report?
You make it available for all things in the budget.
So it'd be a chance to just, just to begin to talk about the budget? Okay. Okay. That way, you could come up here all the time.
All the time. Y'all just get used to me.
Any other questions for Ms. Kerbo? And if not, Chair would entertain a motion.
I move we approve item number six.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, we approve item number six as presented. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Number seven, consider approving 2019 Tech Dot Routine Airport Maintenance Program Grant Project proposal. Hi, Mr. Resti. How are you?
I'm well. Mayor, Council, I'm Mary Resti, Airport Manager for the city. Before you is a list of our projects for your approval for our Routine Airport Maintenance Program Grant. This is a 50/50 grant match through Tech Dot that's available to us to do certain projects that include land side and air side. So the list of projects that we're proposing is before you. They're from some mandatory items that this grant covers, all the way down to parking lot drainage. So I can read those to you, or if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay. Is there anyone here that needs to say anything about the airport before we get to Council questions? Okay, Council, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Would entertain a motion for approval?
I move that we approve item number seven.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, we approve item number seven as presented. If no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Resti. Number eight, annual report on sanitation, collection, recycling efforts, and landfill operations. Good evening, Mr. Walker.
Hello, Council, Mayor. Kerry Walker, Public Works Manager. And I'm here tonight, as you said, to give you an annual report on the sanitation, collection, and landfill for this past year. As you can see, there on the first page, I'm really excited, excuse the second page, I'm really excited about this. Public Works is committed to customer service. I'm not going to say we're 100%. Sometimes we do fall short. But for those of you who haven't seen it, this is our wall of fame, and I'm very proud of it, because all of these are letters, emails, employee awards, newspaper articles, or shout-outs for all our employees when they've done a great job. Since that picture has been taken, there's another half a dozen or so on my desk that have to be added. So I'm very proud of what our guys do. And we try definitely to, to, to meet, meet the residents in our businesses, meet their expectations. And like I said, we're not 100%, but we try as hard as we can, and the guys are doing a great job. And I'm very proud of them for doing so. The next slide is our sanitation collection. It consists of about 12 employees, and we service about 9,000 containers, whether that be carts, roll-offs, dumpsters, every month. And I'd like to say, while I'm, while I'm on this slide, that Jose Olivera is our sanitation collection supervisor, and he does a great job managing his guys. And there's 12 of them that, like I said, service 9,000 accounts, and that's a lot of accounts for 12 guys. So they're constantly, constantly hopping. But we do residential cart collection, downtown commercial cart collection, my residential curbside grass and leaf pickup, our residential curbside brush, our commercial business collection that's six days a week, and there's recycling and illegal dumping added to that as well. So these guys are really busy, and they do a great job. So I'm very proud of those guys. The next slide is kind of a picture of our bag, leaf, and yard waste program. For those of you who don't know, it's a free service to our residents, and we come around and pick them up, and we do a clockwise rotation and kind of follow the schedule of our residential trucks as well. Sometimes we get behind on this time of year when all the leaves are falling, so we don't quite get them as quick as we should. But there's just, everybody's raking their leaves. So those guys work really hard at what they do. The next slide is a really cool picture. That's our brand new, I say brand new, it's about a year old now. That's our brand new brush truck that has really worked out so well, and it's got a great Nacogdoches logo on the side of it. Our brush truck makes a clockwise rotation around town, just like the leaf truck does, and tries to pick all those up. But they try to get it, and right now, it's two to four weeks out. Things are kind of, all the storms we've had were a little bit slower than normal. But they do make a rotation around town, and they pick up about 24,000 yards of brush every year out of that one truck. And that equates to about $40,000 to grind all that brush as well. Every year, we grind all of our brush at the end and use it for chips. Parks Department uses it a little bit. We're experimenting with it now to use it on the trails, as well as some rings around some of the trees. And then the contractor that does the grinding calls all of it off. This year, the brush, we did 4,316 tons of brush, which is kind of about average of what we did last year. We hadn't seen a huge increase in it. So it's holding its own about right now. So the next slide is our collection automation and our benefits. We've actually added a couple of things to it. We have integrated technology to try to help with our customer service, make sure we don't miss something, and at the same time, give our drivers a little faster response time and a little quicker getting done with their routes. But we've added our residential assist customers, our assisted customers, excuse me. For some of our customers that have trouble getting their carts out, we do offer a backdoor service, as we call it, and we go pick up their carts and dump them and carry them back to them. So we've added that to some iPads that the residential trucks have that identifies those as they're traveling down their route. So we make sure we don't miss those. So just- So just trying a little bit of added customer service. And we've added some new technology within the last month of equipment maintenance tracking for all of our, not only all of our trucks, but all of our city fleet, so that we can track cost of our equipment versus depreciation of our equipment. So we've added some new things to it that I think will help budget-wise, help cost-wise, but also improve our customer service some. So we're very excited about that, so. And then moving forward, our next slide is our Public Works. We're committed to safety and training. We're doing everything we can to strive to not only help customer service, but be safer for the public and ourselves out there. Really cool thing in this picture on the top left there, December fourth and fifth of this year, we're going to do some driver training, that's actual simulator training. So these guys, each one of our drivers, will be put in this simulator, and it can be programmed from a dump truck to any type of garbage truck. And it focuses on where we have our most accidents, or what we have our most accidents do. So they can program this thing per driver to do some actual hands-on training, kind of like a flight simulator. And they're in a trailer with a surround screen, so it's really cool. So each driver will go through an hour classroom, then, then an hour of driver training. We're going to do all of Public Works, all of our guys, not just sanitation. Parks Department and Utilities has also volunteered some of their guys. So we're doing all we can to not only improve the safety of, of ourselves, but the, but the public. So it's going to be really fun. We're really excited about that, and it's coming up in about a month. And some of the other things we've done, we've installed additional signage on our dumpsters when there's hazards around, trying to alleviate any of our accidents. You've probably seen these bright yellow signs everywhere. They're kind of annoying, but they tell our drivers what we're doing, so.
Watch out for the wires.
Watch out for the wires, because wires sag, and we always tend to hit them, and it's unfortunate for everybody, especially suddenly. They're normally the lowest one on the pole, and we're the ones we hit, so. But we've also done that. We've also identified these same areas and installed them on our iPads so that they're, see that as they pull up to a dumpster or whatever it is. They've also seen on their screen that there's a hazard in the area, they need to watch out for it. We assist in, in the plan development to locate dumpsters in the areas that were safest for the public that are visiting that business that day. And, and we try to minimize backing as we, that's typically where our, where our most occurrences are. So we try to eliminate all of those. We've been working with some businesses along the route to alleviate some of their locations of dumpsters and things that are causing hazards for them and us as well, and been very successful. And most businesses have been very, very appreciative, and it helped us relocate their stuff so that it's safer and faster for all of us involved. So it's been really, a really cool community effort with them. We've installed some Third Eye Surround Camera and Recorder Systems on four of our trucks now. All of our trucks that, actually, one y'all approved a couple of months ago has it on there, but all of our trucks have cameras on them now that record, and they can record three hundred and sixty degrees around the truck. So at any time, we can see in the event there's an accident, unfortunately, or there's a customer that's not satisfied, we can review the tape, see what's going on, and we can resolve the problem really quick and really fast. So it's really cool, we're really excited about that. And drivers are really excited as well. And then we've got communication now through Chief Seavey's radios that he had approved, that we all have separate channels. Now the drivers and operators at the landfill can now communicate with each other a lot easier on their private channel. So it's really, it's really helped a lot, so. But we're real excited about the new training that's coming up. Which brings us to our next slide, which is the landfill. The landfill consists of six employees. We have the superintendent, three operators, and two scale house attendants there. It was, it was permitted in February twenty-seventh of nineteen seventy-six, so it's, it's pretty old, but it's got a lot of life left in it. It's really unusual that we have one inside the city limits, and I'm kind of proud of that, and that we actually own it. Not many cities do own their landfills anymore, so I'm very proud of that. We accept about twelve hundred tons a week. It's a three hundred and twenty-acre landfill, and it complies yearly with our, with TCQ and EPA inspections. And we just had one back in April and really had a, had, had a good inspection. Didn't, we had a few little things, which we know they're always going to find, but there was nothing major. So we expect them to find a few little, small items because that's their job, and we appreciate what they do. So one of the things that we're looking at, Public Works and Engineering, is that we're considering a major permit mod that could expand the landfill expansion for fifty years right now. So we're reviewing that as well. There's some really cool ideas, and, and, you know, with the landfill, not just ours, but anybody's, you've got, you've got opportunities. You can either go buy new land and move a landfill when it's full, or you can figure out what to do with the one you got. Like I said, we're very fortunate that we own ours, that we, we can control it, and it was not leased out to anybody. But we've got some really good ideas that expands the height, fills in some of the places and spaces that are in it. So we think we've got an idea that can get fifty years out of this thing. So it's, it's really exciting to me that we're going to, we're going to get that kind of lifespan, and that's great for our residents. The next slide is the highlights, like I was just talking about, of our TCQ annual report. We reported, it looks like our tonnage went up about three thousand tons from last year. That's just a reflection of the economy. You can always judge the economy by how much garbage there is, and you can judge it by Christmas presents. If you go to the recycling bin behind the library, you can tell when bizio has a really good sale and the economy's good because there's TV boxes stacked for days back there. You can always see what the hot item is and what the economy's doing just by judging the trash, so. The landfill at its current rate right now, according to our engineers, is about thirty years of lifespan, and that fluctuates a few years depending upon our compaction rate. Joey Flore, who is our landfill superintendent, does an amazing job out there. He's got our compaction rate to twelve or twelve hundred pounds right now, which is amazing. And what, when I, when I say that, if you don't understand, we take a square cubic yard, three-by-three-by-three block, and we put two-point-four yards of garbage in that, two-point-four of those blocks in one block. And, and that's how we make our money and get the most out of our landfill. The more we can compact in that one square, the more available squares we have to sell. So he's getting about two-point-four, two-point-six cubic yards of trash in a one cubic yard square. So he's doing an amazing job. I appreciate what he does, and he's doing a great job with it. And that, and that alone moved our landfill lifespan up to thirty years right now, so they're doing a great job out there. This picture here just shows our brand-new scale house. We just got finished installing with the new ramp system. We've been needing one for years. The original one was back in the seventies, and the floor was falling out, and we just got this one put in, so we're very excited about it. Now we're going to repaint the scales and do some more housekeeping out there to make it even prettier, so. Along with the new scale house, we got some new software that can better track our trucks and our accounts for all of our customers, plus our TCQ annual reports, so we're excited, and we're, we're definitely training on that. One of the things we also had was a debt cog grant to get a new covered storage area that we're going to, it's actually just kind of like a big shed that we got awarded from debt cog, and we're going to use that to store recycling in. So we're fixing to start on that project as well, so. And that brings us to our recycling, which is our, our next slide. Last year, we had four thousand eight hundred and sixty tons total of recycling for our yearly recycling waste, and that's kind of about average where it is. It hasn't moved a whole lot. I think it's going to now that the economy's better, but it's about the same as it was. Of course, you know, we recycle cardboard, plastic, paper, used motor oil. We also do glass recycling through a private, private person, that that happens to be his passion. K and B, they do the electronic recycling quarterly behind the, by the farmer's market. And of course, we always, we have our used motor oil that's located at the landfill, fire station number three and number four. The baler, that's the picture of the new baler, and I keep saying we're going to get it running, and we're very close. We're, we're waiting on Encore to plug the meter in. So we've got the contract done, and got the wires in, we're waiting on Encore to plug the meter. It's been a long, drawn-out process getting electricity to that thing, but we are on the final stage, and we're waiting on Encore to get their meter plugged in, so we're very close to doing that as well, so. And then our last slide is our illegal dumping, which I mentioned in our sanitation collection. Public Works Code Enforcement and PD has helped tremendously to get our illegal dumping. I'm not going to say we've got it under control, and we, not going to say we ever will, but I know we've made a dent because the word is on the street that the city's got cameras and they're watching. So I'm very appreciative of that. We have caught several, and we have gave several education sermons to people, as well as I think there's some fines that are in the works and citations as well. Those pictures you see there, there's a couple on Press Road. Press Road is a weekly visit, if not more, but I think the word is getting out. And then there is one there in the bottom right corner where you can actually see the person. We have, I covered their face, but you can actually see the person hauling their stuff to a dumpster and then driving away after they fill the dumpster totally up. So we've got some really cool pictures and stories of illegal dumping, but we are trying to minimize it. That is a, a, a huge expense for the city and, and eyesore as well, so. At this time, if y'all have any questions or any public comment, I'd be happy to answer them, and.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this? No, okay. Counsel, any questions or comments?
To the city landfill, what is its present lifespan?
It's about thirty years right now.
And so would this be additional fifty or would be up to fifty?
I think we're going, it's going to get you an additional twenty, and I think it's going to, my, my unengineered profession is going to get you more than twenty. How to say that, until the engineers actually run all the pencils and do all the, all the calculations, I'm not sure exactly. But it should get us at least another twenty years, if not more, so it's very exciting. What we're talking about doing is taking some existing cells that are already closed, excavating the dirt off of them, building those up, and actually combining them into one big mountain, and then raising some elevations on some other ones that are closed as well. And through that, you have to get a permit through TCQ to get a final height elevation. So that's kind of what we're, we're looking at, at doing, so. And I think that's going to get us a long ways and make one big mountain instead of little ones, if that makes sense.
Any other questions?
It seems like you, you're really kind of at the forefront of the technology and state-of-the-art in this. How do you, how do you keep up with all of that? I mean, you just read magazines, you go to seminars?
We get several waste magazines that we look at as well, and, and, and I can't brag enough, and I know I have, and I, I love the opportunity to do it again. Our GIS department is on the forefront.
They are.
For two guys, they are amazing. I, I say that because I come from a lot larger city with a lot more of them, and these two guys do an amazing job, and they're very, very talented at what they do, and they're on the forefront. And there's nothing that, we don't ask them, that they don't stay awake at night thinking about how to solve it. I figured that out, so I quit asking as much as Tred because I know he's not sleeping when I ask him a question, so. But they will figure out what, what the problem is, and they will figure out how to fix us something. The maintenance tracking that I talked about on our equipment was built by our GIS department. They're instrumental in saving our city a ton of money and all our departments by these work order systems, and, and it's helping efficiency as well, so that, and that's our, that's our goal, customer service and efficiency. The residential route thing that, on our iPads, they added as well. You know, and, and I think it's been said in a previous council meeting, but our GIS department got a national recognition in a magazine that was worldwide about what they did with these iPads, and we're very proud, and I'm excited about these guys here. It's very humbling to work with all these city employees because they're very talented, and I'm not just saying that. And it's great, it's a great honor to work with these guys, and it's really amazing, so. We're trying to be on the forefront, we've got a long ways to go, but we're slowly gaining ground, I guess, so we're trying.
And the tire picture, is that, didn't you mention that to me, and you actually caught that person?
Yes, we did catch that person.
What were the repercussions to that person? I mean, that's not just throwing out a bag of trash.
Well, that particular person owned that property, and I don't think fully understood that he could, couldn't put things on his own property like that until we showed up. But it's very funny that we now, like I said, the word is out that we have cameras and pictures, and we, we catch people. But we also have residents that have my cell number, and they send me pictures or call me day and night, seven days a week, that are watchdogs for, we have one on Press Road, but we have them that throughout, that call us and let us know what's going on. And a resident actually called us and said the guy was there dumping, and we were able to catch him before he left. He had to rent a dumpster from the city. He was given a few days to get that disposed of properly, and, and, and he had to pay for the disposal of it. He owned the property, it wasn't, it was an illegal dump, but it wasn't an illegal dump on somebody else's property. In his mind, he could put whatever he wanted there, however, that's not the case, so. We got it resolved very quickly when we showed up, and he, he was very instrumental in getting it cleaned up. So that was, that was a big one, and about sixty yards' worth of material on that one alone, and that was at Press Road as well, so.
Anyone else? Kerry, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
You are a vital part of our city, and we appreciate you and, and your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine, presentation on recently adopted Main Street transformation strategies. Dr. Mahaffey, welcome back. How are you?
Good.
How are you? Nice to see you.
Thank you for having me. I'm Amy Mahaffey, and I am our Communications and Main Street Director. And I'm very excited tonight to kind of share with you an update of our, what I like to call our strategic plan, if you will. A few years ago, the Main Street program, there's a nationwide program that we subscribe to and are accredited to each year, and they actually sent their director from the, the Texas Historic Commission to help us kind of formulate the plan that you, that you have in your packet. And so the, the genesis of this was to ensure that, you know, the Main Street Advisory Board that's appointed by you all is made up of a lot of volunteers, and we do a great deal of events and a great deal of outreach that require a lot of volunteers. And so having a roadmap and a kind of a method to the madness, if you will, is very important. And so to give you an update, this, this document is living and breathing, and it's constantly changing kind of based on the needs of our downtown merchants and based on feedback we get from people that frequent downtown and people that might want to frequent downtown. And so you'll notice in the packet that some of these items are a little broad because we did that on purpose. We wanted things to kind of be very fluid and make sense for what we need at the time. But to kind of give you an overview, and this is, this is pretty timeless. It's important that we focus on, you know, making sure our goals remain at the forefront of every activity that we do and every event that we plan kind of has a background and a reason why we're, we're choosing on that date or why we've chosen a particular audience to target. And so to start out, you know, kind of the foundation of it all is to have engagement with our community partners, the Chamber of Commerce, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, everybody in this room, city staff, and of course, our volunteers at SFA that help us out a great deal, and the Main Street Advisory Board, and ensuring that there's not a lot of duplication of efforts. The second part of that is what I like to kind of call our internal, internal network. And so ensuring that the downtown merchants have what they need and are getting feedback from us and seeing the Main Street Office and the city as a resource to them. That's important that we not only, you know, advertise for events and do things like that, but are also helping solve problems and helping do some trainings and some things that you'll hear about in just a moment. And then, of course, we want to continue to tell our story to the public. And so it's important that we continue to brand downtown as a really awesome place to live, work, play, all of the above. And so that's changing every day. I hope when you walk out these doors that you see the vibrancy and the excitement and all of the efforts that this community has put into downtown. And I'm excited to be a part of that, and the Main Street Advisory Board is excited to be a part of that. And it's a testament to our economy and to the vibrancy of the community as a whole. And so if, on the next slide, we have the one of our four points, which is the organization. And so part of what we do is ensure, like I said, that we work with all of our community partners. I get to go to lots of different board meetings for other organizations to hear what they're doing and see how that impacts downtown. And that's why this document is living and breathing, because as other organizations improve and grow and change, we, we try to do the same. And then another thing that we've started, that, you know, it occurred a while before I came to the city, and I heard a lot of reasons as to why we didn't have a downtown merchant association and kind of why that, that went away. And there were different models of that that worked for where the program was at the time. But we were hearing a lot about, you know, I don't know the people, I know the people on my block, but I don't know the store owners across downtown. I don't know the other people that own the buildings downtown. And so we brought back what I like to call value-added meetings. And so we actually have one in the morning, y'all are all welcome to come, eight forty-five. We, we do trainings now, and we get to have not only a little bit of networking and, hey, welcome to downtown, we have a lot of new businesses, this is who this person is, and networking on that front, but also adding things to, to, to their meetings so that they feel like that when they come, they leave with, with something. And so we do a lot of, hey, this is an idea that was presented to us, what do you think? We try to get feedback from the merchants. And then, like this photo, you'll see our, one of our local attorneys, Andrew Ship, who's also on the Main Street Advisory Board, was talking about employment law at that training. So how do you file your paperwork? How long do you keep paperwork for employees? These are some things that business owners, you know, they get very busy running their day-to-day and can get behind on new laws and new regulations. And so we're trying to keep that information at the forefront and continue to be a resource. And then, of course, at the end there, the ever-important extended business hours. This is a thing that small towns like us, five- Uh, this is a thing that small towns like us fight across the country. You know, we have a lot of business owners that there is one person or maybe two people that are running that store. And to, you know, ask them to be open very late hours or on weekends and on Sundays and on times that we know tourists like to be in the shops, um, is sometimes is a really big sacrifice. And so, trying to create that community of support. Um, we've got a lot of businesses that are open downtown on Sundays, and we've got a lot of restaurants. And the hotel being open has really helped with that synergy and bringing people downtown. But, um, you know, sometimes people feel like they're on an island, and, you know, the church, the folks on Church Street will say, well, I, I'm, I feel like I'm the only one open. And then if you're, they're at a meeting with their peers and they hear, no, we're open too, we'll keep sending people your way. There's some reinforcement there that allows us to keep encouraging, uh, extended business hours. Uh, some studies say that, um, it takes up to seven years to get the community, even locals, to understand that, hey, we've, we're open on Sundays. And there's a misconception in the community that, um, that nothing's open downtown on the weekends, and that's actually not true when you come down here and look around. But, um, seven years is a lot of commitment for one person. And so, we continue to try to offer support and, and continue to try to, um, encourage people to, to do that and to figure out what else they might need to help them achieve that goal. Uh, the next point on our next slide is design. And so, um, like you see downtown, there are a lot of things that have added to the historic look and feel of our community. And, um, this is a lot of, of dreaming and planning and thinking ahead. And so, uh, we're working toward not only trying to see, you know, what, what are we gonna need in the future? And how do we, how do we get there? But, uh, what can we do today to make it more beautiful? And so, some of the things that we've implemented are, um, rewarding people that have gone above and beyond. And so, uh, we've have new businesses, and we have people that, um, have really made their outside spaces look very unique and very interesting to the public. And so, sometimes a little competition helps with motivating others. And we've seen that, you know, we even have vacant buildings downtown that the building owners have, they're not quite ready to develop it yet, but they've put planners out in the front, and they've done some things that create that uniqueness and make our city so, so, um, beautiful to the, to the people that might be driving by or walking on the street. Um, and then finally, we, uh, have also worked with our city gardener, you see our planners out front. And, um, her name is Kristy, and she works for the city. She, and she does an awesome job at keeping our planners looking beautiful and changing them out. She's actually in the process of changing them out right now. But we, um, engaged her in the design committee to actually create a resource for merchants that maybe wanted to do a, another planner or maybe wanted to have extra things outside of their store that they maintain, but they don't know what to buy, or they don't know where to start. And so, she's become a really great resource for merchants to not only pop their head out and say, hey, what should I plant in my planner? But we've created a guide for them to say, this is what you can plant in the fall if you're in the shade. This is what you can plant in the spring if you're in the sun and that kind of thing. And those little things tend to go a long way because sometimes people just need to know where to start, and they just need to be encouraged by their, their peers. And so, um, that's been a really great asset to, uh, the design committee. Uh, the next slide is, um, our promotions, and this is what has me very busy right now. We have lots and lots of holiday events. I told somebody today I'm the curator of Christmas, I feel like, because, um, we are doing some awesome things downtown to, um, kind of add to the Nine Flags Festival. Um, those of you, I'm kind of catching up because I wasn't here twenty years ago when the Nine Flags Festival started, but there were a lot of volunteers that made that event really, really big. And so, um, volunteers get burned out, and we are trying to kind of divide and make the weekend when we have our beautiful Christmas parade, something that people want to come in to, to out of town for and stay the night. And really, what I always tell people is double down on the weekend. And so, adding things to that one big weekend, and you'll, you'll be, if you're here, uh, December first, we have late night shopping on Friday night, we have a five K on that Saturday. Uh, the festival starts at noon, and then the parade. And so, um, there's a lot going on that day. And, um, we, we are trying to continue to get people that maybe don't always come downtown to, to come downtown um, and see what we have, and hopefully that makes them want to come back. And so, sometimes these events seem like they're a lot of work, and there's, it takes a lot of resources and a lot of time. But people will, if you sensationalize attending downtown and it's not just going to lunch with a friend on the weekend or whatever, then they tend to get excited and want to come, and they want to come back. And so, um, that's a really exciting, um, prospect. And then one of our events that I, I like, I'm the child of a realtor, so I've spent my whole life looking at other people's houses. And, uh, we recently just wrapped up the second story tours. And so, that event not only showcases, uh, lofts downtown, but it also allows future developers and future people that might buy buildings to look at the possibilities that could be in our, uh, remaining few downtown buildings. And it's just a kind of a fun event. And so, um, those events have, have grown. Um, another one we added last year was, uh, it's not really an event, it's not, it's not really labor-intensive, but it's called, uh, the Elf Scavenger Hunt, you know, those little elves on the shelves that the kids like. Um, something we were hearing was, you know, there's a lot of things to do, like shopping and going to bars and restaurants, but there's not a lot for me to do with my kids. And as the mother of two tiny humans, I, I began to understand that. And so, uh, we actually have merchants that hide these elves all over their stores, and there's a little scavenger hunt card. And so, they can come down with kids, they don't have to spend a lot of money, and hopefully step their foot in stores that they normally wouldn't go into in the process of hunting these elves. And then hopefully they buy things, and so, or they remember, oh, I, that store's really changed, I haven't been there in years. And so, there is, I promise, a method to the madness and kind of all the silliness that surrounds some of these events. And then finally, um, this is kind of the last step on the next slide is, um, what we, oh, I have to talk about our pictures first. Um, the one I will point out here is, um, the, the wine swirl that we do every year, um, has been a really great thing. We've grown that event. Used to sell three hundred tickets, and then Sarah O'Brien, who was here before me, upped it to six hundred. And last year, we upped it to a thousand, and we're still selling out as we continue to increase ticket sales. And so, what that's allowed us to do is pay for beautification efforts downtown and also pay for some marketing. And so, if you go out to Central Heights, you'll see, um, that billboard, Real Life in Person. And, um, like you can see there, it says seven days a week. And so, we're trying to continue to get that message out to locals that we are open seven days a week downtown. Um, and then finally, the last slide is, um, economic vitality. And so, um, I'm trying to train the, uh, volunteers that are on the, uh, on the, um, Main Street Advisory Board to stop saying, uh, "economic revitalization" because I think that implies that it was bad, and it's not bad. We would just want to keep making it vital because I'm a little bit of a word snob. And so, uh, economic vitality, that's our new thing that we're gonna say. And that's actually, um, a term from the National Main Street, uh, folks that I, I really like. And I think that it's a true testament to where we are in Nacogdoches. You know, we're not, there are communities across the state that have tons of vacant buildings in their downtowns, and they have plenty of work to do, and we do too, but we also have lots of brand-new thriving businesses, and we are very full of life here. And so, um, to continue that vitality, we have a different set of problems that people that maybe are just starting in the Main Street program do. And so, um, part of what we've done here is tried to not, like, similar to the merchant meetings, try to do the same with building owners. And so, we were realizing, you know, we're about fifty-three percent owner-occupied, and so, a lot of our merchants are, are building owners, but then there are some that are not. And sometimes those are very important people that can help us, uh, continue to engage stakeholders in our community to fill up these last few vacant buildings. And so, um, we just started new quarterly meetings. We've had two, and we've had different sets of people at each meeting, and so, we've kind of done a lot of education at this point. But we're hoping to continue to engage these groups and to, what do you want to see downtown? What changes might you want to see in the future downtown? What challenges are you seeing? How can you help us, kind of a thing, and really create some really great synergy. Um, and then finally, the business mix is very important, and that's something that we don't... As the Main Street Advisory Board, they always say, well, we're not the only ones that matter in, in this room. We're just, you know, a small part of this community. And so, engaging some of these other groups and other things that would be beneficial to downtown and trying to recruit those businesses, um, is very important. And so, um, we're trying to offer support to the new businesses while also bringing in, hopefully, people that add to the mix and, and bring something different to downtown. Um, and then finally, uh, we've, we've done some other things that are a little different in the last couple of months. Um, we held an off-site social media training. And so, the merchant meetings are kind of short because they have to go open their stores. And so, um, we've done two trainings of, um, actually, I taught them, the mayor attended one of them, um, with your mom. And, uh, it was kind of just a start at the beginning, social media one oh one, and how do you help? How is your business? A yarn business has a very different audience than a restaurant, right? And so, trying to customize the education and trying to help people a little more one-on-one. Um, we were finding that, you know, when you speak broadly to a group, that some people are like, I don't know what a hashtag is. I thought that was a number sign, why do you change the name of it? And things like that. And so, we were trying to, to start at the beginning and work our way up. And, and so, that's been a really great thing because now I get questions all the time about how do we improve? Or how do we, you know, I used to mention that one thing in that training, and now I'm ready at a point in my business where I can implement that. And so, we keep going back to being a resource to our downtown merchants. Um, and then finally, um, and you'll see there in the corner, we, and you might have seen some of these ads in the newspaper. Uh, we've been working with the Chamber of Commerce and Nedco and some other folks in the community to revitalize our shop-local campaign. And so, that has been a challenge because we live in a world where people like to shop online, I like to shop online. And so, um, there's a lot of education that takes place, and we're really trying to do some real marketing that tells the story of who people are in Nacogdoches and why you should shop local. And if you can't shop local, what's the next best step? And really trying to be realistic because we realize the environment that we live in. But at the end of the day, we still want people shopping downtown all the time as much as they can. And so, um, we're trying to balance that message and make sure that people understand the, the importance of shopping locally, but also how, how they can fit that into their lives and their budget and, and, and the different places that they are in, in their lives with their families and things like that. And so, with that, um, I would love to answer any questions specific that you have to the packet, um, after a public comment.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone that has any comments about, uh, the presentation? Okay. None, counsel? Any questions for Dr. Mahaffey?
Well, I have just one question. Parking, is there an issue with downtown parking between customers and, uh, employees that use those spots?
Uh, I will say that any given day, you could probably find an employee that's trying to park in front of their store. Uh, but I also, we, there, we, I say we, we don't fight a parking problem, we fight a parking perception problem. Um, there's a perception that there's not enough parking downtown. Um, and that is obviously helped by employees that are working in a business parking in the back, and we encourage that all the time. Uh, however, when we look at the parking numbers in a parking study, we look at how many parking spaces we need and how many we have, and we, we have a sufficient amount, and I can give you those numbers specifically. But, um, I, I actually told a group last night in the community that, um, there's a map that I like to show at NAC one oh one, and it shows from A to B, anywhere downtown that you want to go is less distance than a busy day at Walmart when you park at the back of the parking lot and you need to get paper towels at the back of the store. And so, um, sometimes you think when you're in a downtown and you're in a small town, you can pull up right in front and park where you want to park. But I think it's a good thing when you have to maybe park farther away because then you walk past stores you normally wouldn't see, and you, you still get where you need to go, and it's still very accessible. Uh, but we do, we do encourage people to, you know, do the right thing, park behind, leave the spaces for your customers. And we try to help people that need easier access as, as on a case-by-case basis.
Uh, yes. Mr. Bartlett is giving me the numbers for the parking spots. And city actually meet the requirements, they even meet the requirements on handicaps parking.
Yes, sir.
But I, I did have an issue with where the handicaps are placed, you know? Even from, uh, like the three hundred block. They're at one end, and you know, you, your handicap, you gotta cross the street to get to, if you're going to another business.
Yes, sir.
And it, and it's better, uh, trying to parallel park? Not straight-in parking versus parallel parking? But that, that was just, I, the numbers are good for as far as required for parking.
Yes, sir. Okay. Anything else?
Two questions.
Um, what is the impact, positive or negative, of Amazon, online shopping? I mean, is that, are people in downtown trying to sell stuff online, or do they see it as a, a competition? And, uh, I mean, it seems like a lot of people, you know, they aren't gonna buy something from downtown that they need. It's more like, let's go find something interesting to buy.
Sure. Uh, I don't, I think that, I, I don't want to put words in people's mouths because I think that the, it's a, it's kind of a personal opinion, but I think that the, the feeling that we get, and, and of course, we're always gonna prom, promote shopping locally, but we also understand that online shopping is the way of the world, as do they. Um, I don't know that they see Amazon particularly as a competition because it's, in a lot of ways, the goods and services are very different, and the things that you get downtown aren't always gonna be the things you can get on Amazon specifically. Uh, but to answer the other part of your question, we have a lot of businesses downtown that have successful online businesses, and sometimes more successful than their brick and mortar.
Okay.
And so, they have done a very good job of, Miller's Point's a great example of, they have tons of customers throughout the country. Texasized Bling's the same way, that their brick and mortar is a place to kind of set up shop and to have a storefront, but their, their main revenue is coming from online. And so, they've definitely figured out a way to thrive in the, in the changing environment.
Okay. Any other question? Can you give us an update on what, uh, sometimes called the Maudeane Building or the Office, uh, wide office building?
Next door?
Yeah, next door.
Uh, I know that the, um, we have a, a, a foundation here in the community that's purchased it, and I, uh, know that there were, there are some plans to, to look at the feasibility and how we're redeveloping that. And it's, you know, as you know, the longer a building sits, the more challenges you face in, in, in redeveloping it. And so, uh, the plan, I think, next is to just get some real numbers and some updated numbers on, on the cost of that, and, uh, go from there.
So, uh, I mean, are they working with y'all, or are they just doing their own thing?
Oh, no, no, we're, we're, we're definitely involved, yes, sir.
Can you tell us about that? I mean, like, what are some of the planned uses? Uh, do, are they trying to find potential tenants? Uh, do they have drawings? Do they have budgets?
Uh, I, go ahead.
That may be getting a little far off of our presentation of this agenda item.
Okay, so, uh, is that something the city's involved with, or is that just a private deal that the city's not involved with?
Well, I, once again, that's not an agenda item, and we may be getting a little bit...
Oh, okay.
Foundation has it, and the city's been involved working with it, I guess, safe to say.
Okay. All right. And so, if we wanted to find out what they were doing, would that be something we would talk about, or is that secret?
Once, once again, sir, we're, we're getting beyond our agenda items, so.
Okay.
I think we're going outside of the scope of this agenda.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say, Scott Waller, he gave a presentation on Amazon.
Yes, sir.
And it really wasn't a competition between the local business downtown and Amazon. Uh, I'm, probably because of the products that's sold and unique product, and restaurants, et cetera, is different than, you know? But it, it really wasn't a competition between, uh, the local businesses downtown and Amazon.
I mean, downtown is like no other place, and you're not gonna, you're not gonna beat it. And so, I think that when you get to go into a restaurant and see a Dolly and get to visit with her and her husband, and they've now have three restaurants in downtown, that's unique. And we live in a world where everybody in this room has bought something online, and we can all just have that as our reality. But as long as the, you know, I keep saying in our, in our meetings with this, Mr. Waller and the Ned, Nedco and the chamber is, it's shop NAC first. And so, if you can find it here, take the time and go try to do that because you are helping our community in more ways than, than you realize. And so, sometimes it's just an education thing, and that's just where we are. And you, you know that all too well by hearing the presentation, so.
That was a good presentation.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't, uh, please extend our thanks to your board.
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all have been very creative and very flexible and very, uh, forward-thinking with a lot of this.
Thank you.
So, we appreciate you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number ten, presentation on Scenic City Certification Award. Mr. Mantey.
Good evening again. So I'm here to give a brief, uh, overview of the Scenic City Certification Program, what it's about and the process that the city went through to, uh, get a certificate from this prestigious, um, organizational group. I want to first of all start by saying I, I knew about it, but my honorable city manager actually gave me the idea to start, uh, working on this. I already knew about it, but nothing prompted me to look into it. So I want to give our city manager the credit for giving me this exercise to go, um, through this, uh, program, and I really appreciate him for that. So, um, Scenic Texas, that is a bigger umbrella. It seeks to preserve and enhance the visual character of Texas. So if a city is, uh, is certified as a scenic city, then the major, um, character of such a city is that that city is there to preserve and enhance the visual character of that, of that city. Um, my, my, my PowerPoint, um, what I have is a, is a sample, uh, presentation from the Scenic City Organization. So I'm happy to put the questions out there. So it's basically, I'm answering the... So basically, I'm answering the questions that I have up there, as you can see on the screen. So who developed this program? It is made up of 15 prestigious organizations in Texas. As you can see, the Airborne Land Institute, the American Planning Association, TML is in the Texas Historical Commission, Keep Texas Beautiful. These are various organizations that came together to look at how cities ordinances to see if they meet certain criteria to be awarded those scenic certification. Anybody who has ever had a chance to deal with any of these groups would tell you they are very well informed and they are really serious about anything that they involve themselves with. So I haven't been able to get an award from these 15 prestigious organizations. To me, it's a good effort for the city. So in general, what is the Scenic City Certification Program about? It's a program that recognizes municipalities that implement high-quality scenic standards for public roadways and public spaces. The key word that they usually look out for and the benefit of this program is that it ensures that it enhances economic development, there's improved quality of life and a stronger sense of place. It looks at various criteria in the city ordinances. And these criterias are all geared at ensuring economic development, quality of life, and stronger sense of place. As I go on the presentation, I'm going to talk about some of these characters. And I believe we talked on it earlier today in talking about landscaping. All of this coming together to ensure that a city has a stronger sense of place and also improved quality of life. The benefits of participation, first of all, the key word here is assessment. And I personally really benefited from this because I was new in the city and I needed a chance to look at what the city ordinance entails. And so it helped me to have a good assessment of the city ordinances. This group also look at the analysis, they look at the application, they evaluate it based on certain criterias that they have. And then communication, how, it also serves as a platform to educate citizens on the impact of local regulations. And as I've mentioned before, economic development, the evaluation supports municipal planning and economic development efforts. If any business wants to come into the city and they know that the city has a scenic city certification, then it tells the developer or the investor that the city has good ordinances which will help such a business to grow well within the city. So how does the program work? The 15 program partners have devised a set of model standards. And as we go further, I think there are so many standards, but they have three basic criterias that they look at to award this certification. And this three standard, the basic criteria would be the permitting system to issue permits for on-premise sign. They are really big on signage within the city. With time, most cities are probably, I would say, most cities are beginning to adopt modern way of putting up signs. As you drive along major roads within any city, you realize that post-signs, I don't want to use the word nuisance, but they are gradually phasing out. People are devising better ways of putting up signs, like monument signs and certain signs that would enhance the street quality in every city. That is one thing they look at. Landscaping or tree planting program, which we talked about earlier. Landscaping has a capacity to change the entire terrain of a street or a business or an area. And that is one thing they really, really look into to award this certification. And then the prohibition of new billboards. I did talk to the planning manager of the city of Tyler. And he did inform me that they couldn't qualify for this certification because they allow billboards within their city and stuff like that. But Nacogdoches, we don't allow billboards. We classify that as an off-premise sign, and that is something we don't allow in the city. So any city that allows billboards within the city, it's an obvious, what is it, automatic decline for this award. And then the evaluation covers 76 separate criteria across those sections. So that's to tell you there was a lot of work put into this to get a certification. Some of the standards they look at, sign regulation, utility and cable line programs, lighting standards and design integrity, parks, trail and open spaces. So basically, they look at so many things within the city ordinance to be able to score the city on what, based on what the city has. So I have the part where the certification, I came, so the period opened in January 2018. I came here in February and that was the first thing the city manager talked to me about. So I got started somewhere around February, just when I came in. I submitted my application before the deadline. They reviewed, and then the final scores was released in July 2018. So I have, so on this screen, I'm trying to show some of the worksheet and what they look at. So a typical example of the application, as we have on the screen here, is saying Section 1, streetscape, protection of native and established trees and landscaping and sidewalks. So my duty was to look at our ordinance and give references to how we address all of this stuff in our ordinance. And I believe that just me putting the answers on there is not what they actually look at. They go beyond what I have put on there to reference all of this stuff in our ordinance. So if, let's say if I decide to lie about certain things we don't have in our ordinance just to get enough points, they will go beyond and look at our ordinance to make sure I actually have those things in there. So it is, I would say it's an honest and very clear exercise. And I really, and for me, it was an opportunity for me to also learn about our city ordinance since I was new in the city. Another, Section 5 talks about lighting standards for streetscape and public spaces. So once again, had to reference our ordinance that talks about this and then try to answer as much as I could to get all the points that are available. Landscaping in parking lots, it was a big thing in the application. But so with that section, all I did say is we do allow parking landscaping, but then it requires 200 spaces or more. So in their criteria, probably they want parking landscaping of 50 or less, or 100 or less. So if we have 200 or more and most cities have less than 200, then those other cities are going to score better than Nacogdoches because we allow 200 before we have parking spaces. So sometimes we might have certain ordinances in the city. But in relation to their set criterias, we might not get a full mark because it does not really, based on their set criterias, our ordinances might probably not be, meet those standards or might just be an average ordinance. So the fact that we have certain things in our ordinance does not mean we get a full mark just by having, they go deep into the specific regulation and the design element as well. So this is a typical one with answers. And then once you answer, you have to give a link to the code for them to also read behind the scenes and make sure they're actually getting the right answer from the city. So at the levels of certification, we have the platinum, that is cities that score 90 and above, gold, silver, bronze, and then recognize, that is the 52, 59% of possible points. So the question here is, what if the standards are not met? Typical example, at the awards, I was talking to the former city manager of Wichita Falls, which has a population of over 100,000. And he did tell me, I actually work in Wichita Falls though, but he did tell me before I came in, they tried to apply to this, but they couldn't even qualify because they couldn't meet the basic requirements. But he believed that it was, it prompted them to know that there was something that they needed to do more about the ordinance. So the question now is, even if Nacogdoches applied and didn't get any certification, what are the implications? So the first implication is no wasted effort because it's a way for every city to reassess their ordinance to see how they fall into place in regards to other, in comparison to set standards or in comparison to other cities. And then there's no bad to reapplication damage. You can reapply in as much as you can, even if you don't receive it in the first year. And then it's a good way to receive valuable evaluation. They did send me back the results. And then they did point out where we lacked and where we had to improve upon. And then it's a blueprint for success. If you're able to apply and get a certain level, then you know at least you are doing something good in your city. I have on the screen showing the score sheets. It's a little, I think it's kind of, but I'm just trying to show this to let you know that it's something that they really looked at and scored based on what our city have in our ordinance at the moment. So let's look at the park trails and public spaces. They asked questions on it, and then we scored 10 out of 15. And some of the feedback was, we provided an example of an ordinance that received four points in the application. But I believe, can we go to the next one? Please, let's go back again. So with park, trail and public spaces, the maximum point was 10. It was 15, and we scored 10 out of the 15. And then one question they asked was, provide a comprehensive system of parks, green belts and open spaces that is compatible with the environment and conducive to residential neighborhoods. And then we scored zero out of that. I think that has to do with our landscaping ordinance. I don't think we allow landscaping in residential areas. It's only for commercial development. So these are some of the things that I believe moving forward, we can look at. And then they have, they had a section for bonus points. If the city does a lot of historic preservation, storm runoff collectors and so many other stuff that could give any city a bonus point as part of the evaluation. So timeline of event for Nacogdoches, on April 2nd, 2018, we submitted an official application. June 18, we did receive our initial score of 117 out of 338. And so that ends recognized certification. And I did talk to one of the directors responsible for this. And I think what he mentioned was, usually lots of older cities have big challenges getting recognized or getting any certification because developments predated most of these modern concepts. So a city like Nacogdoches, as old as it is, they believe we've done so well to be able to recognize because most of these criterias that they have, I wouldn't say I really knew, but they, I mean, they came in place not long ago. So considering the age of Nacogdoches, we being able to be recognized, I think it's a big achievement, so. And then we were awarded on October 11, 2018, at a conference in Fort Worth. And I want to give the opportunity to thank the mayor, Councilman Moore, and Councilman Bolden for being at this awards evening. And then we had Sherri from CVB as well. I have a list here showing some of the cities that have been certified in the past. Platinum, City of Denton, Cedar Park, Gold. We have Bee Cave, Belton, Fort Worth. And then recognize, we have Double Oak, Prosper and Taylor. So other recognized cities, so these are cities that were, that received the same certification just as Nacogdoches. And with a city like Prosper, the population is 20,000. This is a city that is, it's not a new city, but most developments in Prosper are really new. And I know Prosper really well. So comparing how new development going to Prosper and comparing Nacogdoches, as old as we are, I think in comparison, we are really going out there. Of course, there's still more room for improvement, but I think we have done so well so far. And then a city like Taylor, Texas, I looked at some of the criterias that they use to give them those recognized levels. So in comparison, I think we are doing well as if you look at the population and how old these cities are. So lessons learned, I've mentioned before, some cities don't even have enough on their books to be able to meet the basic criterias. And so we've been able to achieve that certification. I think it is to tell us that we are doing better than other cities. And then it's a good opportunity for staff to read over and review ordinances. Good opportunity to see how Nacogdoches score in relation to the set parameters. And a good opportunity to earn a prestigious certification from this recognized institution. So all in all, I think it's a great exercise. And I really, I'm happy I got involved with it. And I think we got a recognized certification. We can apply in another five years to see if we want to go forward. But it does not mean that we have problems with our ordinances. It just means that we can improve upon our ordinances as time goes on, so. That brings my presentation to an end, and I'll be willing to take any questions that you may have.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to this? Yes? No? Okay. Counsel, any questions or comments? Okay.
I do. You know, what was the point you made about the old city? I didn't completely get what you said. You know, you said something about we were an old city and it had some implications for this.
Okay, so in our discussion, let me take a city like Prosper, Prosper, Texas. There's a lot of, it's becoming more, it's more of a newer city, new development, new housing. And so even their zoning ordinance predated most of their current subdivision regulations. And so they're able to enforce better landscaping, better streetscape, better sidewalks and stuff like that. But looking at a city like Nacogdoches, it's an older city. Most of our development probably were in place before we even adopted our zoning ordinance. And so in comparison, a city, a newer city will be able to enforce more design standards than an older city that, where our ordinances are now chasing development. So it's, in comparison, newer city will be able to implement so many other better standards than an older city that just adopted probably zoning ordinance in the 80s, whereby the city is probably over 200 years.
So is it your opinion that the newer parts of town are more scenic than the older parts of town?
No. But, so to me, I wouldn't say they are more scenic than the old city. But if we put in an ordinance today, let's take the landscape ordinance as an example. We reduce 120 to any number, like a lower number. All newer developments would have beautiful parking, we have beautiful parking lots. So if we have, let's say we have an area in the city that experiences a lot of commercial development. You realize that as you drive along that new area, the design standards would be better than some of the older areas. So, yeah.
I won't be, talk about this too much. But I'm sure you're familiar with the part of planning called new urbanism. And new urbanism basically says that a lot of new zoning ideas that were done in the 70s and 80s end up not making the best cities, but the best cities are actually the old cities. Savannah, Nacogdoches, you know, that are unique because they have mixes of uses. And when we start trying to zone everything, my opinion is I would much rather drive through downtown Nacogdoches than a suburb in Houston. And you have to be careful with your zoning and design ordinances because they create cities that aren't as good as the old way. People knew how to do it well, and they did it well, and then they learned how to do it wrong.
Good, I agree. And I think in the olden days, people had more pride in where they lived. And so design standards were really great, not even zoning. People really focused on design standards because they had some sort of pride in communities that they live in. But nowadays, people migrate a lot, they just come to the city.
Take for instance sidewalks. I mean, somehow we could afford to build sidewalks, probably when they mixed concrete by hand. But now we can't afford to do it. And it would be interesting to go back and, you know, read some of the paper of when Nacogdoches decided to put bricks down on the street. It's like, oh, we can't afford that, it's too expensive. You know, but, you know, it is the thing that makes Nacogdoches what it is. And I would love to go back and, I don't know, you know when the brick streets are put down in the teens?
I have no idea.
Go back and just review some of that historical literature and, you know, see what, you know, people were saying at the time about, we can't afford it, it's too expensive, it's going to keep this from happening or that. It's going to keep this from happening or that from happening. Uh, I, that's something I want to personally look at.
Sure.
And I will do that.
All right.
Anyone else? Not, thank you very much. Uh, we do have a, a plaque and, uh, would you be able to take a photograph of us? Uh, council, would you join me down here? Please? On Leo. Yeah, I want you up here too. Okay. Oh, okay, sure. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work on this.
Thanks a lot.
It was great. You gotta hang this in your office?
No, I would give it to, uh.
Okay, you are gonna hang it.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it is now 7:20 and we are going to go into executive session. So if you'd like to wait, please feel free. If not, thank you for attending this evening.